...to order. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
I am here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
And Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here. We are excited to be here in person, with options for those who choose not to be in person, to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the City Clerk. If participating remotely, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin tonight's special meeting with three closed session items. Item number one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, workers' compensation. Item number two, conference with labor negotiators. And item number three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Now, before we convene to close session, City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on these items?
Madam Mayor, we have received no requests in council chambers and there were no requests in Zoom.
All right, well then we will convene to close session in Conference Room C. Thank you.
Okay, we are back and we're going to receive San Mateo Police Department Staffing Needs Assessment and Organizational Analysis Presentation from Chief Barberini and Captain Perazzaro and team.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members, thank you. In the interest of time, I will be brief. I am joined by Captain Perazzaro who facilitated this study. Quick background and then I will turn it over to our experts. When I joined the department about four and a half years ago or so, there were some certain steps that I had planned to take. It was just before COVID and things get a little sidetracked. Among those were, you know, going from beginning to end in our policy and procedure manual, making sure that that was current and something I was satisfied with, review the training manual, a lot of big steps. Among those was to getting an objective look or analysis of where we were as a police department. I looked back at our own department to see when the last time that had been done. We did make somewhat of an internal effort around 2017, but it was time for us to get an analysis, fresh set of eyes on where we are as a department, not in the interest of trying to add or trying to point out major deficiencies, just to kind of create a baseline for where we are in conjunction with where the city is and where we're going when it comes to development, some other issues. So, we're not here tonight to claim that the sky is falling. We don't have any big, huge asks, but we do think it's important that the council understands where your police department is, the position that it's in, and what we're looking forward to moving towards the future. So, in that vein, we contracted Citygate Associates to conduct not only a staffing needs assessment, but an analysis of our organization. And it's been a long, arduous process and we thank them for their patience and we welcome them here tonight. So, I'm going to turn it over to them, let them introduce themselves and kind of go through some of their findings. One quick caveat, a lot of their findings and recommendations, some of those have already been implemented during the course of this process. Others we're evaluating, may have tried before and it didn't quite work out. And then there's others that you'll see are more long-term goals when it comes to staffing and some other things. So, I will turn it over to them. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. It's our privilege to be here tonight. Clearly, you're going to get a summary of our findings, recommendations through the study that we did. However, there is a more in-depth, comprehensive report that backs up any of the details and recommendations. So, there'll be findings, recommendations. We won't necessarily go through each individual one. We do intend to provide some highlights. As you heard from the chief, we are just a portion of the team, the three of us that are here tonight. There is data analysts, there is staff that look at finances, not your finances, but how the budget works within the organization, so that if there's a recommendation, it can actually be put together in something that is reasonable and digestible. And these are the areas that we're going to cover, these five different bullet points, and then we'll follow up with some questions. If there are questions along the way, be sure and interrupt and we will do our best to answer those questions. Sometimes when it's fresh, that's the best time to ask the question. So, this is the core team. This does not include what Citygate is back in our headquarters, based out of Folsom, and many of us, including Gary Elliott, who served as the project director, and myself as the project manager. Also, Ralph Brown comes to us also as a coworker on this project, but extensive work with California Post. So, we, as a team, I want to say there's probably right here close to 100 years of experience of local municipal government, but also trying to stay current with what is best practice. And that's, everything that we do is making sure that we're looking at it from a best practice perspective, not simply an opinion. And last but not least is, we do have a data scientist guru that allowed us to help do some very rich, detailed data, so that we can provide some more granular information in our recommendations. Just so you understand and any member of the public, the purpose was to do a comprehensive staffing needs assessment. In the early stages of our discussions, when we did onsite interviews and then follow-up interviews and discussions with city staff, we were looking at these three different areas. What is the current and future staffing levels that may be required, especially as a city is trying to project any type of growth or impact? Is the organizational structure correct? Are there modifications that could add to efficiency and effectiveness? And also, there are times when policing evolves and changes, and are there opportunities for any type of alternative response? To conduct this method, this is the methodology, just so that you can get a perspective of how we focused on this. This has definitely been one that has taken longer than you might expect, but nonetheless, each step along the way, we were working with the police department staff, the chief and the captain, where ideas would be fleshed out. And you heard, many of them were either already implemented, or they've been tested and there's this interaction. So, it doesn't get to this point today and say, okay, here is the report, break it open and begin. It's been a work in progress. We've been working closely. We, clearly, you can see, we started this presentation before getting to this point back in July, and we're here tonight to give you a high-level presentation from some of our findings. But it's important to also then put it into some context and framework, and we do this through some benchmarking. So, I'm going to turn it over to Gary Elliott, just to give you some context, so that you can have a better understanding when we dive deeper into this presentation.
Thank you, John. Metta Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I am also very honored to be here and it's good to work with such fine folks. And the next couple of slides, as John mentioned, are some benchmark slides. And we do this, just to kind of, they're more informational for anything. So, it gives you an idea of where the city stacks up in terms of citizens per officer and officers per thousand of population. And we use, in coordination with, again, with Captain Perazzaro and members of the organization, to identify those benchmark agencies. And so, we've highlighted San Mateo and where, kind of where you stack up in that regard. Next slide, please. And this is a busy slide, I apologize for that, but really what we did is we just, we looked at the policing costs and if you could really just boil it down to the per capita cost of your police department. And so, that's what we tried to do on this slide here. And it shows a series of statistical data and your per capita cost comes in at 561, and that's per year population. And you can see how that measures with the benchmark cities.
And I'll add one comment to that, and that is, is when you're looking at benchmarking, you should not look at it from a perspective of, are we high, are we low? Sometimes this is really, are you efficient and are you effective? So, there's going to be costs associated with providing a policing in a full-service city. It does give you a sense of, when you try to break it down per capita, so $561 per person per year. The next question that is often asked in a community is, are you providing the appropriate level of services? And is the community satisfied with that level of service? That's usually the context to frame that one in. The next few slides, again, get very detailed, but what I'm going to do is just explain the true takeaways. I was able, over the course of time, working with the city staff and to extract the data. Non-identifiable information, but this particular incidence, there was 341,000 distinct incidents over the course from 2018 to 2023, at least at the mid-year project where we were able to ingest data. The importance of it is to understand how the calls come in, how they are dispatched, where they're routed to. And this just represents patrol. It's not every call, but the CAD incident data that comes in is whether it is driven by the community or it's driven by an officer or a community service officer. It's recorded, and it allows us to analyze how it's coming in, whether it's a 911 call or if it's an officer initiated. Down below, what is important is, is this is a year-over-year where it's hard to see it, but it's projecting the overlapping, whether increase or decrease, from the previous years, from a dotted line to a solid line. And it is clear, it's not uncommon to look at the years through 2020 and 2021 during COVID, where there is a fluctuation, and some of that fluctuation is visible, but that is very common, and we've seen that in other agencies. There was nothing truly extraordinarily notable in it, because we can clearly see when we get to 2022, it spikes back up to what would have been the norm, the normative numbers, even when we're starting to look backwards and then all the way back to the 2018, 2019. All that to say that we were able to look at robust data, and it allowed us to truly understand the level of work that's being performed by your police department. Your police department is very active, whether it's being proactive by staff. And also, your community very much engages when there's a need for a call for service. There's a lot of response that comes from your community. Looking at this, just from a slightly different perspective, all I wanted to highlight in the patrol area, especially when you look over the color coding of this, is there's a lot of activity in doing welfare checks, security checks, traffic stops are near the highest, and obviously, any other type of disturbance. Alone, this may not inform you of any one particular issue, but what it does do is, is overall, you begin to see all the different types of call types. And there's 191 different call types, but they represent a broad perspective, in this case, 341,000 distinct incidents over the course of those years. And the reason why that's important also is because the police department has to prioritize its response. And using just a series of priority codes, Citygate found that this became the important factor, and that is, when you're needing to respond in a very urgent or emergent case, how effective is your police department? The average response time over the course of these years is six minutes. This image, though, is something that's far more granular. And the idea is, the same way a fire department would look at it and say, 90% of the time, the calls can come in at a certain, your first officer or the second officer. And so the 90 percentile is 12, you know, it's 12.1 seconds of call handling time. So you can see how efficient your dispatch is to get an emergency call out. And then it's just the response time after that. With the first unit arriving under 13 and a half minutes, 90% of the time. I caution this not to cause any alarm, but that also equates to being under six minutes on the average. The reality is, is when you start looking at it minute by minute, you can see that your police department and your communication center actively identifies what is really urgent and emergent, and those responses, in many cases, are in minutes or the first couple of minutes. But this just shows you the bell curve of being able to identify how effective the response times are in the community. I wanted to also highlight another area that I think is important, because this also generates a lot of complaints in a community, and that is, is whether it's traffic congestion, whether it's traffic engineering, or traffic behavior. The police department, this image that's on the right-hand side is a statewide database that, whether anyone knew this or not, San Mateo is compared to other cities of its size every year. Now, this particular slide represents 2021, because it's the most recent one as data is being updated each year. So they're in arrears, but just to give you an example, San Mateo ranks 59th out of 60. What I want you to realize is 60 is the highest or best rating of all cities. So if you were to compare cities, there's only one other city that's outperformed the city of San Mateo statewide in its size group. And they do this based upon vehicle miles traveled, and they compare it to accidents, whether it's injury or fatalities. It gets granular in the frame, but the takeaway is they're very effective in their traffic enforcement and engagement and education. And finally, this slide is one of the assessments that I do on being part of the team, is to really look at the deployment. And while it's the chief's prerogative to understand what is the best way to staff a shift and each team, based on the resources that are currently available to deploy, we are able to look at the utilization rate. And sometimes the question is, is how many police officers do you need? This kind of imagery helps to identify whether or not you have them, and maybe whether they're just in the right place. It's not uncommon to see any city, it's San Mateo being very similar. The community wakes up in the morning, and there's a lot to report on overnight calls, plus there's a lot more activity when the city is awake and they're not asleep. We look for a saturation rate somewhere around 60%, and the reason is, is because beyond 60%, the triage that occurs takes away from proactivity, which also helps to improve safety. And it also creates the challenge of being able to move about the city. And now you have maybe pending calls, and so it's not a perfect solution, but what it does do is, this is a version of benchmarking of utilization. And a better way to understand it is, is when there is saturation by the police department staff, personnel who are on duty in uniform, responding to calls or observing activity, if they are saturated, they tend not to be able to actively engage in things that could be important to what's going on. And so you have to find that balance. Many times, there are staffing studies that try to analyze how many officers you absolutely need to actually work on a shift, and we did look at that. But for your sake, I think it's important to just understand whether you increase an officer during the midday, especially as the day starts, or a CSO, a community service officer. It meets the need of being able to address the increasing calls for service during the day. But also, as the city grows and there needs to be a demand, you can begin to see that this might be the area where you would invest additional resources. And that would be by time of day. Looking at just a few recommendations, and I've highlighted a few just in my explanation, and that is, while the department has a cadre of police officers that are sworn and that if you could deploy them in patrol, 58 of them are allocated to patrol. The challenge is, is you don't always have them, because there could be injuries, there could be that you have, you have some turnover, retirements, that an officer might leave, and so you're always chasing that number. The image on the left is just an example. If I assessed 154,000 distinct incidents, these were public-generated, not just the fact that the department's tracking everything. Now that image tells us when people are calling the police department. This is not proactive work. This is a call for service. So one of the recommendations, as staffing, well, as funding and planning allows in doing a strategic plan, would be to look at the potential of adding two officers in the patrol ranks. You do that one per team. This is an example of being able to, if you look at the previous slide, to improve the saturation and also seeing where the calls build throughout the day. So that's just a consideration in our recommendations. I just wanted to give you a high level of that on patrol. I can always answer questions at the end if there's any particular questions. Again, this is an ongoing, a few items that you can see. We are aware that the use of community service officers are in use here, and they're very effective in police, modern policing today. The only recommendation is, because they're effective and you have them and you have funded them through a grant, that grant at some point will run out. And so the recommendation is to ensure that there is a sustainability of a very effective tool in the community service officer in the future when that grant runs out. Additionally, while there is great success in the traffic approach here, the consideration to add a traffic CSO, that is an area that is a recommendation. It's a consideration during any future strategic planning. And then last, in fact, it's already been implemented. So as you see here, that was a recommendation early on, but the chief has already taken care of that. And lastly, there is the opportunity to formalize a more strategic, dedicated, problem-solving unit, focusing on both downtown, any other problems that you might face, recognizing there's challenges to response to homelessness. There's always those unique things that you need to focus on. This could be accomplished, based upon our assessment, by reallocating one sergeant. The reality is, I know that that position hasn't been available. And so one way or the other, the recommendation is, is to focus on formulating a responsive team. I do believe that part of that has already happened, but you still have to be able to staff it. This one can get a little tricky, but it's important to understand. When you're trying to have the number of officers ready to deploy, when you have vacancies that have people in the academy or you're in the hiring process, it usually can take upwards of a year to be able to backfill. So imagine if somebody departs. If you're only hiring at the moment of departure, you got a vacancy, I can fill it, you're a year behind. And so the key is then, being able to focus on, do you have the right number of positions filled to be able to perform all the needs, especially when there are injuries and there are those that you have to deal with bargain-benefited time off? And one of the ways that we see that agencies can do that is, as time allows and funding allows in the future, is begin to focus on that ability to have that buffer over the course of time, even if it starts with one or two or as funding allows in the future. Then you're not trying to operate a patrol function where you need 58 officers, but you're only at 50. And that's usually where most agencies, and here, you're no different. Most of the time, patrol suffers the most. And so the key is, if you can focus on that, to where you're not dipping too low, it also affects morale. And then lastly, the size of this agency and the risk that there is in policing today with liability, one of the recommendations is, you know, in the future, is to consider taking and creating the patrol function of watch commanders versus managers. It's not uncommon, as cities are growing over time, that this is a way that many agencies have functioned, but the liability that becomes significant, and also the mere functions of having to work almost seven days a week just to manage, a watch commander would solve some of that, so that's why the recommendation is there. There's more detail if you have questions with that, but it is one of the recommendations to balance the future police department. And with this, we're going to shift into another area of the department, and I'm going to turn it over to Ralph Brown since the assessment was done. Actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to turn it over to Gary.
It's okay. Ralph's next. I got one slide, and then we're back to Ralph. Hello again. So as John mentioned, patrol is really the backbone of the organization. It's where, that's really the face of the organization, and it's where, when folks call 911 and want a police officer, the patrol responds to that. And our CAD systems, our computer-aided dispatch systems are set up fairly well, and we're able to extract a lot of data, as you saw in the previous slides that John presented, that help us measure the work volume and the workload and the time spent by patrol officers at various calls for service and types of calls. And the investigations piece, which is kind of a supporting operation, where major crimes that have been reported initially to the patrol get referred to investigations, and then they're conducted follow-up. Unfortunately, the CAD data is not as easily assembled to analyze workload for investigations. And so we rely basically on our experience and the subjective analysis of talking to the folks, interviewing the investigations, the detective sergeants, the detective commanders, the detectives themselves. And so, and that was the genesis of these recommendations. Just a key point here is, one of the things that stuck out to me is that at the time of the initial interviews, there was not a whole lot of follow-up being done on major property crimes, with the exception of some residential burglaries. And so in the report, one of the recommendations we had was to create a major crimes unit and then further divide that into a specialized property crimes unit, which, as mentioned here, has already been implemented. So, and I think John mentioned that too, many of these recommendations that were in this report have either already moved forward or have been implemented. So I want to really give the chief kudos for that. And so I would say that as investigative resources, as moving forward as you can and you're able to better assess the workload on investigations, be it coming up with a manual workload tracking metric systems or utilizing the caseload management component of your records management system, then I would say add detectives or add resources into investigation at that point. And I think that's it. Next slide. Now, Ralph, you're up.
Thank you. If I can, I'd just like to take a minute to publicly acknowledge and thank the chief and his staff for helping us, because we can't do this on our own. And whenever we put a request out to the captain or any of the staff, they got back to us immediately. And you should know that they already have a full plate. And then we're adding to that plate for their benefit to help them. But nonetheless, we're asking them for more. They're already giving more. It's worth commending their leadership and efforts. That said, technical services, dispatch, I think there's an opportunity there for risk management, maybe to provide some leadership supervision at night. And when that's lacking, we know that sometimes with, in the absence of leadership, in the absence of supervision, sometimes maybe decisions are made where they could have been better, possibly. Yes? Do you have a question?
I'll defer that to the chief or the captain.
It depends on the hour of the day. We have up to, I think, 17 officers is our max number if we have full shifts, which is not always the case.
11 till 6, 11:00 PM till 6:00 AM.
I think at 6:00 AM, we drop down to four or five officers around 6:00 AM. Between 2:00 to 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM, we're at about four or five on average.
Continuing, property and evidence. Property and evidence, huge liability in law enforcement. Huge liability. Guns, narcotics, money, right, that's seized, et cetera. Very, very, very critical to make sure that that is managed correctly. I reviewed a audit report from 2022 that the city sponsored and spoke with the staff. Clearly, there's an opportunity there to maybe bump up the staffing a little bit over time and reduce some of that liability and better manage risk management in those areas. Records, hey, San Mateo's no different than any other agency, including my ex-agency from the state of California. The California Public Records Act requests are just coming in left and right. And maybe there's an opportunity there to provide a good service to the community, but also relieve some of the stress and responsibility within the department. but also relieve some of the stress and, and responsibility within the department if you have, if we align a individual or two to do nothing but process public records requests. Next slide.
I have another question.
Yes.
So the property and evidence and records, usually we actually cooperate with the investigating team from the county, but it goes to the district attorney. Does that property and evidence stay here or is it, does it go to the county?
Primarily stays here. Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, almost all evidence will stay here. Well, we're responsible for our own evidence. The only exception to be, would be if we had something that needed to go to the crime lab for some type of analysis, it may be temporarily in the custody of the county crime lab, but then it would be returned to, to us. It's our responsibility to hold that evidence.
Next slide, please. Internal affairs, a lot of opportunities here also for tracking public records requests, body worn camera, policies, procedure updates, that kind of thing. So I, maybe that would be a good opportunity to, to focus in on that and make sure that staffing is adequate. Training, as a former training supervisor and training manager, I'm very familiar with what your training officer is doing here. And he is doing Omen's work above and beyond. Not only is he a gun-toting police officer who manages and coordinates the training, but he's also chasing people down for reimbursements and travel expenses and that kind of thing. Probably be more appropriate to have that as a clerical support services, kind of a assistant staffing position as opposed to a, a police officer might be worth considering. And then media relations, it seems like a lot of your activity happens in the evening hours and maybe it would be a good idea to flex those, this person's hours so then they could cover those events rather than having them flex, have to flex their hours or, or pay them overtime or whatever. Next slide. School district, really seems to have a, you seem to have a really good relationship with your school district, which is terrific to see. The, speaking with the lieutenant and the sergeant in there, there seems to be an opportunity there to increase your staffing of, of school resource officers. Currently at two, previously it had been, I think, four and, and it would probably be a good idea to worth looking at that opportunity, talking with the school district and negotiating some kind of agreement to where you could get back up to, to four, because your, your two school resource officers already do on the work of four-plus officers already. So, next slide. John?
So I, what I'd like to do is just wrap it up and just start by saying, and this came through some conversations I had with your city manager and the, and the chief, your department is in a very strong position to meet the needs of the community. Just start right there. Clearly, very professional, very active, very engaging. And one of the things that is, that really stood out, and you already heard it, is an agency that's willing to look, you know, inwardly and introspectively, that, that has been the culture of your police department. With, with your current chief, he wanted to actually know it, not just from the internal review, but also externally. And it's, it's very strong from our position. There's always recommendations. And so there's, there's 26 observations in the report and 23 recommendations. The important piece of this is that next bullet, and that is, is we would never expect anyone to implement all of them. It becomes the framework of strategic planning. As you heard the chief say, we've tried a couple of things and maybe there's an attempt, a need in the future when the conditions are different to try them again, or maybe something different. That is the takeaway and that is, is this should just be able to lean on your staff to come up with what that looks like in the future, using this as a benchmark framework and not a list that goes down in order to say, you need to do this or somehow you failed because you have not. These are just our observations based upon best practices. So the, these, in the last one, obviously you've seen, there's a lot of them if you were to ask, especially if you've had a chance to look at the report at all. The chief has already been doing them. There would be times when it would be, what about this schedule issue? Yeah, we've tried that. What about shifting staff? We've, we've been working on that. So very responsive. Yes, I commend the chief and staff for all that you've done with that. And with that, I would just leave it with thank you and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there's, is there any public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So this is for item number four on the agenda. If you wish to speak on this item and you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand now. Give you just a moment to do so. Madam Mayor, we have not received any requests to speak on this item.
Okay, great. Then I'll bring it back to council for questions and comments. Councilmember Hedges.
I have at least, I think I only have one more question. So in the last frame, you mentioned that several things are already implemented. Could you let us know what those are?
Well, I could go back to a few of them, but I believe that.
Looks like the chief is.
I, I can, I can help out a little bit with that. Yes. Supervision of our quality-of-life units, dedicating a supervisor to our homeless outreach team, our downtown unit, making adjustments there. We've made adjustments to our community service officers. We've recognized the value of that and implemented some things there. Specifically in our, in the traffic unit, we've done a, we've done a lot. In our investigations or Detective Bureau, the one recommendation from, from the, the experts was to maybe look at bifurcating that. So we have major crimes and property crimes. We've done that. There have been some things that we've tried that, that, that have not worked, to be quite honest, but there have, but we've, we didn't want to wait until this report was concluded. This has been a, a real productive process for us and conversation and, and we've been able to make those improvements as the, the study has, has evolved, rather than waiting for it to be completed and just, and just wait for a, a final draft.
So the only comment I have is that I have high regard for our police department and I believe that's shared by a large majority of our people in the community.
Thank you. I would like to, Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you through the mayor. In, in the interest of time with this informational item, I'll, I'll be brief. I did have an opportunity to ask the, the chief a, a number of questions and overall just really appreciate this comprehensive report. I feel like it's a great resource for the department and for the city and the public and, and city leadership and, and us on council. I think it'll be useful in our shared goals of maximizing the effectiveness of the current staff, avoiding excessive overtime, burnout, other inefficiencies. And as we grow in population and in the complexity of policing, that we have data-driven understanding of what additional staffing and resources would make the greatest positive impact on service and value to the department, to the city and the public. And so thank you very much for creating this report and for your work tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you so much for this in-depth analysis. And, and I, I want to especially show my appreciation to our chief, who, who continues to raise the bar. The fact that you came to the city with a, a real vision and strategy that you implemented from the very beginning and that you're willing to, you know, lift the hood and, and bring about a, a really introspective and forward-thinking analysis to help us plan towards our future, speaks volumes about your leadership and the integrity you bring and professionalism that you bring to our city and to our community. And I want to thank you for all that you do and continue to do. My, my question, if, if you will indulge us, is, you know, you've already implemented many things and I'm curious, looking forward, are there cost efficiencies or staffing efficiencies that are next on your list? Like is there a horizon in terms of what you want to tackle next and how we can support you?
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's three priorities in my mind. One is, is public safety. Obviously, that's first and foremost. My concern there is, is relative to the direction of the city, is relative to the growth of the city, not only in population, but in development in general, whether that be commercial or residential. And how can we be best prepared to absorb that enhanced responsibility beforehand rather than try to catch up after it's, it's, it's too late? My second is, is traffic and that's just based on the feedback we get in the community. I'm, I know we get a lot, traffic is a, is a nice, is an easy thing to, to complain about and I get it. Traffic is a problem in every city. I was very happy, i- if, if there was one part of this report that I was most satisfied with, it's, it's what we've done traffic-wise and being there at the top. We still have a little bit of, of work to do there and I think that with a couple more pieces in place, we could probably get to where we want to go. And then the final piece is the quality-of-life issues that we talked about. I think that our homeless outreach team does a fabulous job, but they're small, but they're small and mighty. A, a resource there would be great and we're pursuing some, some grant options there. I'm, we're, we're looking to do some additional things with our downtown unit and our mental health clinician program. And, and soon we'll be bringing in a domestic violence council that can respond in a timely manner to those types of scenes. So if those are the three priorities, it would say, you know, being able to keep up with the city when it, well, as far as public safety goes, traffic and then our quality-of-life efforts. So I, I kind of look at it as three pillars.
Thank you. And I guess my, to round it out, you know, our dispatchers are some of our unsung heroes. And I'm curious to hear about the idea of a role of a supervisor and if you feel like that is, you know, is something that has resonance with you.
Yeah, so the, I, I like that idea. It's a costly one, I'm, I'm going to be, be honest, but our supervisors are our first, first responders. And the reality is, is we are, we have two dispatch supervisors, they split the week in half and they work a day shift. And, and then in the evenings and overnight, it's the responsibility of the patrol sergeant after the patrol lieutenant goes home, because we only have so many hours in a day that folks can work and, and, and in the middle of the night, crazy things sometimes happen. And, and there is a little bit of a gap in supervision and even management from a watch commander perspective that down the road, as the city continues to grow and our demand for services, it, it's a 24/7 business that we're in and you never know when, when those are going to happen. So it's, it's hard to predict. So I am, it, it makes me uneasy to, to not have that level of supervision or management 24 hours a day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
I'll keep it brief, but I think the, I appreciate the report. I think it, it really drives home what I've always felt to be the case, which is we have one of the best police departments in California and the stats show. So thank you guys, keep up the great work. I was curious to know, because this is a problem citywide, what our staffing, you know, vacancies look like currently, what our turnover looks like and how it kind of aligns with their models. I think they said you should have 58 full-time. Are we at or beyond that number and how does that look currently?
So we are, we're fully staffed as a police department when it comes to sworn police officers, but that's kind of a misnomer. As, as John mentioned, it takes about a year to get a police officer to sit in a patrol car by his or herself. It just takes a long time. On paper, we're fully staffed. In patrol, we, we should have 58 as a full complement and that's a luxury. That means somebody calls in sick and you don't have to backfill that person with overtime. Our numbers will allow for a little bit of a buffer. Right now, we're at 49. The balance of those bodies are, we have seven people in the police academy and we have one who's in the field training program. So that's where the 58 number is met, but in reality, if you are a, a police officer now working in the street, you don't realize that because it's, it, it takes a while for us to catch up. From a turnover perspective, we're a very young department. That's a luxury for me. That means I don't have a half dozen retirements every year. It's, it's great. We have very, our attrition rate is very, very low. That's great. My biggest challenge when it comes to recruitment and retention at this point is dispatchers. That's a very specialized job. It's a very demanding job, probably one of the most difficult jobs in our police department. And it's very hard to recruit folks who view that as a career because it's so challenging and to pass a training program, it's, it's just, it's a very challenging area. So if people are watching and they're interested in becoming dispatchers, we are actively recruiting.
Fantastic. The only other two questions were, one of the things I guess you get a lot of, I heard, was public records requests. Do we have any crossover with that, with other requests for city staff? So I, I mean, we have a clerk's office, which I'm assuming does public records requests for everything except for the police department. Is there a way to synergize that? Is everything centrally located in a database, meaning?
So yeah, we, we use the same software so we can, we can see the, the requests. It's just that our, the, our, our PRAs are so voluminous that the, the city wouldn't, I think we would, the city would not be able to handle that. So we need to, we need to do that ourselves. But we use the same software, so the clerk has access to pending requests and, and so we are on the same page.
I mean it more in the additional, I mean, not that I would pull staff from one place to the other, but if you were in a pinch, could you use city staff to implement or backfill or help?
The only challenge with that is a lot of the records that are being requested, we have to evaluate because sometimes folks are asking for reports or information that are confidential.
Sure.
And our folks would, would know what, would be, would have more expertise in what the law is regarding how that works.
Okay, thank you. The last question was SROs for schools. It was mentioned that, and I, I sit on the school liaison, I'm the school liaison for this, the council. There was four and there's now two. Was that in large part because they pulled funding for that or?
Yeah, the, the, the funding model used to be that each school district funded a, and what I mean each school district, I mean the San Mateo Union High School District and the San Mateo Foster City School District, each district funded one SRO. That funding halted in, in late 2020 and since then, the city's continued its commitment. We've restructured our youth services unit to include a lieutenant and a sergeant in retaining the two SROs to try to combat that. But, you know, we have three large public high schools, not counting the two private, large private high schools, as well as the, the middle schools. And it's a, it's, our SROs are spread extremely thin and our, our relationship with the school districts are great, but it's an expensive proposition. So re-engaging with the school districts is something that I know that the city manager and I have worked on a little bit, so we're, we're trying to, trying to get there.
I'm also keeping the pressure on, just to be clear.
Thank you.
That's why I asked the question. But thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for the answers.
Yeah. And thank you to you, all of you for making the presentation and all the work and the chief. And I'd also like to recognize Captain Ferrazaro for staying with this, because I know it's a multi-year effort and you also have a 24/7 job to do too. So I totally wanted to ask about the SROs and thank you for the response. Really think that it's an important area to focus on and with the school, we, we look forward to supporting your efforts in that regard. And then my only other question is, what new technologies are out there that, you talked a lot about different bodies and staffing, but what should we be looking at blue sky?
So I'm going to start this, then I'm going to turn it over to the chief, because prior to this, we had a, a kind of a follow-up, updated conversation. My background is, I used to also chair the data sharing task force with DOJ, also while I was a chief of police. Always looking forward to where technology is. There's no question, the use of cameras, we know that AI is going to be in everything and technically it's already here in our phones, right? We use Siri and, and the like. The key is, is to, to create efficiencies and efficiencies with some of your contracted companies such as Flock Safety or Axon. Their, their advancements are already in play and your chief, based upon my conversation, is working towards, you know, how to stand up a, in standing up a real-time information center and, you know, DFRs, drones as first responders can observe just about anything that's publicly available. These are all the technologies of the future and you're positioned, as I see it, and from the position of CityGate, to be, you know, well-suited. Clearly, sometimes it does take funding and it takes a council to direct the policy and the funding source, but it leverages times when you're trying to, to say, well, how many more officers or CSOs or dispatchers? That all costs money too. But when you can leverage this kind of technology to be more effective, that is a crime reduction strategy and it's also one that you can, you can scale and you can do so in ways that these economies of scale, especially the partnership, not just San Mateo, but in partnership with two other agencies to be able to come together, just shows a high level of innovation. But I'll turn that over to the chief to.
Sure. Initially, I'd just like to thank this council. When I first came to, to San Mateo, we, we came to you with a Flock proposal regarding license plate readers and you said yes. We came to you with a drone proposal and you said yes. I can't tell you how or what the impact that has on, on keeping our community safer. What used to take 30 or 40 police officers from cities all over the peninsula to try to, to try to catch a burglar, now we can do with a handful of officers, some drones and some, some cameras in the right place. It's, it's amazing what technology can do. This, the, and our, thanks to our city manager and the council, during this most recent budget process, while we were trying to keep things as. we were trying to keep things as conservative as we could, we did plant some seed money for a real-time information center. We think that will be a tremendous force multiplier, and that will allow us to do more with less when it comes to personnel, and we're excited about standing that up, and we're excited about inviting our partners throughout the region as that grows in our neighboring jurisdictions to, you know, the folks who are committing crimes know no jurisdictional boundaries, so we need to act that way. So I think that the technology's been great, the city's been great in allowing us to invest and take the lead in that from a county perspective, and we look forward to doing more of that. None of this, I mean, it all, it's all a costly venture, but, you know, at the end of the day, technology's great, but at the end of the day, my most valuable resource, but it's also my most expensive resource, are people, and good people make a good police department, and that's really how it, what it boils down to at the end of the day.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and on behalf of the community, thanks to the entire team. Quickly, yeah?
Just to comment on the technology. So I had the good fortune of watching at the fair the use of the drones, being able to look for lost children, being able to oversee what's going on, finding some trouble spots that may not have come to view with people just walking around policing. And also, I think recently, we had an issue with a person injured by another person with a weapon over in Los Prados, and you were able to use the drones to identify where they were, made it a lot easier. So you've made the use of these very effective, and I'm so appreciative of that. Thank you.
Just before we conclude, I just want to make sure, technology's great. I do recognize that there are also those that are skeptical of technology. There are some privacy concerns, and we do, when we do roll out technology, we also try to roll out a transparent approach on our transparency page. So if you want information about how we're using license plate readers, that's available on that page. Very soon, we'll have information on how we're using, we use drones on a regular basis. I mean, they're used for all kinds of, even a traffic collision, it helps our traffic investigators kind of figure out what's going on. There'll be public information on how we're using those. So we are, we do recognize that while technology is huge in what we're doing in our endeavor here, it also comes with a great deal of responsibility, and we intend to be as open as we possibly can when we're using it.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for a great informative session. And with that, we will close the session, and we will have a 10-minute break, okay, before we go on to the regular session. So thank you very, very much.